Welcome all of you to this function tonight. Mr. Pastor, my highest biggest prayer. Let's go ahead and go Lord in prayer tonight. Emily, Father, I want to thank you for this night. Lord, for the opportunity that we have to be here. And Lord, be using your house, Father, so that we can learn more about our city. And Lord, those who are running to support our city, Lord, in bettering the lives of our citizens. And Father, I pray that you will bless us tonight with what is said. May it honor and glorify you in everything that you say you do. And Lord, I pray that you will give us wisdom for the questions that be asked, Lord, and the strength to answer. And Lord, may we also pattern our lives after you, Lord, in our city. And Lord, that we may make this a better place, a better community, a closer knit community. Father, that we may be able to reach out to a neighbor in help lane who is in need. Father, I pledge my blessings and I'm here with the candidates to answer the questions. And those of us who want to ask a question, we love you, Lord. In your name I pray. Amen. If those of you please remain standing, those of you who are veterans by law are allowed to salute. We'll lead you in the pledge of belief. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing here, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, I'd like to thank you all for being here. My name is Bill Vance. My wife Barbara is the one that has helped put all this together. I'd like to thank Reverend Hanes and staff here for allowing us to use this facility. And I'm glad you all came. So, having said all that, I want to turn this over to our moderator, Sheriff Nash.
Thank you so much, Bill. Thank you to all the ones that worked so hard to bring this forum together. If y'all come now here tonight to be a part of this, to educate yourselves about these very important elections. People think about the national election, they get all the other variety, they get all the media attention. But really what happens is our state voter problem impacts the public more than anything. Now, we really do admire you for coming out to take the time to vet these candidates. I think that's critically important. I wish you were four of you, and I wish we had one of these opportunities to have a former elector as one of the key components of preserving our livelihoods. So, thank you all for being here. My name is Ray National, the former sheriff of Dorchester County. And I'm truly honored to be here and participate at this forum and act as your moderator. We'll introduce the candidates here. In just a second, we have Kevin Condon, who's first here, Brandon Cox, and Greg Abin. We have two candidates of the bond that could not be here tonight. And we gave them an opportunity to write us a letter or note that we share with you. So, if people allow me to do that now, we'll read these two letters to you. Because it does happen, it's busy during campaign time, and it's tough to get to every candidate. It does happen as a conflict. Now, this is from, is it Aileen Moore or Aileen? Aileen Moore, okay. My name is Aileen Moore. Unfortunately, I could not participate in the forum tonight. I am submitting my information to be shared with those of you in attendance this evening. I'm running for Goose Creek City Council. I am an 18-year resident of Goose Creek. I have been married to Stephen Moore for 25 years. I have a daughter who is a teacher at Bolivar Bluff Elementary, and a son who works for Burke County Schools. I was a stay-at-home mother to my two children and became active in their schools and our community. I was an officer in the PTA for several years at both Westview Primary and Westview Elementary. I served as an officer in the school improvement council. I was a Girl Scout member. I was on the Goose Creek Citizen Advisory Board. My husband and I were involved in recreational and club sports in Goose Creek for many years. At different places, I am interested in staying on course in our city. I feel we should limit the development and preserve the green space. I want to be a voice for the city. I want to carry the concerns, ideas, and thoughts to our city council to be addressed for the citizens of Goose Creek in the effort to continue to keep it a good, safe place till the end of the days of family. I look forward to being a part of the 20-year plan of development and meeting the needs of the city as a team. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my efforts and intentions in this election on April 5th. Respectfully, I mean, Lord. Darrell Williams also submitted a letter for us. Darrell has served with the Goose Creek Planning Commission for several years and would like to continue to serve the community to the next level. He is running for office because he believes it is important to serve the community where one lives. He takes seriously the responsibility of being a dedicated public servant. Darrell is a retired military veteran who has lived in Goose Creek for a decade with his wife and two children. His daughter currently serves in the U.S. Navy. He believes that Goose Creek is already a good place to live, work, and raise a family. However, he wants to be part of the local leadership in this assessment and works to ensure that sustainable development meets the needs of present economic development without compromising our quality of life, green space, and our future. He is running to keep Goose Creek a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Darrell believes that transparency, communication, and service are key pillars to supporting the citizens of Goose Creek. Additionally, he wants to assure that people who are responsible for public safety and security, to include those who provide services and respond to emergency threats, have the tools they need to keep all citizens safe. He will be a dedicated public servant committed to safety, service, transparency, communication, and building an even better Goose Creek. So, that's Darrell Williams and Aileen Moore. Here are the rules for engagement for tonight. We're going to allow each one of the three candidates to have two minutes to give an opening statement. At the conclusion of that, we're going to open it up to questions from you, the audience. So, I'll call on you to ask your questions. We want to ask you to formulate, to state your position, formulate your question into the formal question, and give you one minute to do so. I know some of you like to pontificate and express your own opinions rather than trying to ask a question. So, state your position, ask your formal question, and we'll let each of the three candidates respond. So, please try to ask a question that would be appropriate for each candidate to give a response. Each candidate will have two minutes to give you a thoughtful response. We'll rotate you as you go first as we move through the Q and A, giving each one an opportunity to be the first to respond. If one of the candidates should challenge the record of one of the other two candidates, then I'm going to give that candidate an additional 30 seconds to respond or clarify whatever they brought up, should they desire to do so. So, at the end, we'll give them another two minutes to do a closing statement. I think I hit all of the, I think I hit all of the rules of engagement here. So, we're going to start, and we're going to let Kevin go first with the opening statements. If y'all want to share, Pat, now I'm going to this room.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kevin Condon and I'm running for Goose Creek City Council. I was born in Columbia, South Carolina, moved to James Island when I was five, graduated from Davidson High School. Moved to Goose Creek 16 years ago. I am married to Jennifer Condon, who is a teacher at Stratford, and also a graduate at Stratford. We've been married 17 years. We have three daughters. Spencer, who's 13, Ray May is 11, of which go to Westview Middle. And we have a little one that's two named Keeling. I have a bachelor's science degree from Longstone College in business administration with concentrations in management and computer software applications. I currently employ at Republic Services Incorporated. That is a waste disposal company. We are the second largest in the nation behind Waste Management. I have had numerous positions there over the nine years. And right now, my current position is operations clerk. I work with supervisors of each line of business. I work with operations manager and a general manager, and handle a lot of operational and logistic assignments for them. I'm running for city council because I feel like Goose Creek's a wonderful place to live. That's why we chose it. And we feel like it can be better. That's why I'm running as well. We need the green spaces that we have, but we also need to find that balance between commercial and residential development. I was doing some research today and found that we have a median household income of $60,000 in Goose Creek. That means we have money to spend, and we have nowhere to spend it. So, we go to Summerville and North Charleston. So, part of what I like to do is find a way to get that balance and bring the dollars and keep the dollars here in Goose Creek. I appreciate your support, your vote for city council on April 5th. Thank you.
Very good. Brandon Cox, next.
My name's Brandon Cox. My family's been in the States since before I was a child. I fought in the Civil War as well as the Civil War, fought in the military. I was blessed to have been a part of the war. My mother was there with me. I appreciate that. My father was in the Air Force. He grew up in Turkey and Japan. And 20 years ago this month, I joined the Air Force as well. And funny enough, my first three sons after graduating from high school was back in Turkey. I went to Hawaii, spent six years there, and was fortunate enough to be accepted to a reserve program here in Charleston. My commander at the time allowed me to go to Iraq as an independent contractor. I spent a year there in Iraq working for a high-end private-owned contract firm. I met a lot of good people, a lot of neat things. When I came back, I started a company called Frat Ringer's. That currently supports the FBI, the State Department, Department of Defense, as well as state law enforcement. About two years ago, my wife and I were doing a morning walk. And we decided that we're going to stay here in Goose Creek. Probably for the rest of all that. We should serve people all the time. So, I started getting more involved in the community. I went to the Burke County Chamber of Commerce. Spent some time with those guys. I got elected to the board of directors last year. Last year, I also got appointed to the Burke IV mission as one of the strategic committee members. The reason I'm here running for city council is because we need strong leadership in the tri-county area, the state, the city, as well as the management. One of the great things about being on the chamber is I'm seeing what's happening in the county. I think I can create a new, fresh sense of leadership in the city. And that's why I'm here. So, please go. I'll make the call. We're ready.
Greg Abin.
Okay, yes, I was about to stand up. I've had to speak so much in my life. It's just, this is how I have to do it. You just have to get up and walk around. 1982, my mother came home from Charleston and said, "Yes, sir. We're moving to Goose Creek, South Carolina." I said, "We're moving to what?" Well, I didn't hear that one. We moved here in 1982 as my father got transferred with the Navy. There's so many others that you have. And I've called it home since then. Even when I was a kid in South Carolina, my parents had moved back to Florida. When I went home for the weekend, I came to Goose Creek. Because that's what it has been for me since 1982. Graduated from University of South Carolina, got a bachelor's degree in urban science, master's degree in higher administration. And spent my former life as an educator at Tri-Tech College working with employers in and around the state of South Carolina. And I made a transition 11 years ago into the private industry in private business. And then it takes some of those tools that I learned in working with students, working with employers in the state of South Carolina, and apply them to the private industry. Those same things are applicable here at the city level or at any level of government. And I want to apply them to the city of Goose Creek. My youngest son graduates from Stratford High School in the coming days, months, whatever that is. And I now afford the opportunity to have the time to commit to our city to make an impact in a way that I could not have otherwise. Very excited about this opportunity. And I'm very excited that all of us showed up to hear all of us and what the three of us, anyway, have to say moving forward about what we want our city to look like. Certainly, there are many issues facing our great city. We are a great city in which there is a family. Number one among us is economic development. And how we encourage class act commercial investment. Because everything else, green space, recreation, law enforcement, fire services, you name it, everything else has to be paid for. The only way we're going to get there moving forward without continuing to raise property taxes in city of Goose Creek is through planned economic development. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Shannon. So, now we're going to enter into our Q and A. So, we're going to let Brandon be the first one to go, since we let Kevin go first to open statements. Who has a question for the candidates? Now, this is going to be a short call. If we don't get as much participation, that was the whole point of having you all here and having the candidates. Yes, sir, and I'm not going to force you to do it, but I think it would be nice if you stated your name.
I can help there. I think you can help. Mr. Cox, you're not on the Green Team, are you?
Yes, sir.
You are?
Yes, sir, I'm not.
Then, wouldn't that be perceived as a popular mayor not holding you on city council? And how would you handle that challenge?
Let me just interrupt just a second. Let's see if we can take that question and twist it slightly so we can have all three candidates address it, so it's not just for Mr. Cox. So, I don't know what the Green Team is. So, would this be a question we could ask all three candidates about the Green Team? And only applause for one, two of you? Okay. Can somebody help me out here? Not knowing the issues. Is there a way that we can make this, all three of them answer this? Okay. Well, can they answer why they are or why they're not? All right. Just sort of kind of throw the question all three of them can address. We don't send them somewhere or two people out. Well, hang on. Okay, very good. Turn it up to Brandon. Very good.
Let me just make sure I have the question right. So, Greg and myself, we're not handpicked by anybody. And the question is, how is that going to affect us and how do we feel about that completely against the Green Team coalition? Three seconds. That might be seen, is that right? That's a very good question, and one that starts off pretty good, because I certainly have a better place than this. So, for myself, and I'm looking to speak for Greg and himself, I'm a very independent, free-thinking person. One of the great things about not being handpicked by anybody, I like the mayor. I like your way. That's sort of the council. I think we're going to shape it however the election turns out, is that I'm not beholden to anyone except you, Governor. I get the vote on my principles, which is safety first, and I'd rather be a volunteer. And I'm not going to have to answer to anyone else other than the people I help with. Do you have some questions?
Good. All right, Greg.
Same earlier. I got into this more than. As my youngest son graduates, I saw the opportunity to serve. And it's funny because it's something that I've always thought I would do. I always thought I would serve in this capacity or something like it. And when I announced, all my friends from high school kind of laughed and said, "It's about time, Greg. We're going to do this one day." And so, I got into it because I saw an opportunity to serve. And I can only speak for myself, is that that's what I saw. I think there's value in independent thinking. I think there's value in having people who don't mind disagreeing. I think there's value in having reasonable conversations with reasonable people, having reasonable disagreements, and governing reasonable conclusions. I'm going to write that word down, by the way. Reasonable. All right? But that's important. It's important. You can't see or you can't find every aspect of every issue unless you have some disagreement somewhere. Unless you have people that are willing to have that conversation. Sometimes it might sound uncomfortable, but it doesn't happen. But, you know, you have to be willing to ask questions. I don't want to speak for anybody on the Green Team. I know that for myself, that I'm running on the courage of my convictions. And if I'm left, anything I decide, I will be able to explain and live with based on that.
Kevin, you're going with, take the hand of this one.
Sure.
Go ahead.
I am the only member of the Green Team for this evening. And yes, I was asked by the mayor if I would run for city council. And the reason I was asked is because I currently serve on the Goose Creek Recreation Commission. And I've had many conversations with the mayor about recreation and green spaces here in Goose Creek after our meetings. So, he knew I had the fire and the passion to serve because of the conversations we've had. It's nice to be endorsed by the mayor. I am not riding his coattails. I am out every day walking neighborhoods, knocking on doors, meeting voters. And his name rarely comes out of my mouth. I'm doing this for me, my children, and the people of Goose Creek to make this a better place to live and raise a family. It is nice to have his endorsement. And I can't speak to the two because they aren't here. But it was with the understanding of the mayor that even with his endorsement, I was not going to vote with him just for the sake of voting with him. And he was fine with that. I'm going to vote my convictions and I'll vote according to what the voters that put me in office tell me I need to do. Because in essence, at the end of the day, y'all are the people that we work for. I will work for the mayor. I will work for staff. I will work for voters here. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, men. Next question.
Yes, sir. My name is Bill Creel. I wanted to find out, start with, the Green Team. Is this the ones, I guess, that are, for lack of better words, that are handpicked or that are endorsed by the mayor? Is that what this is?
Yes, sir. There were three individuals that the mayor has thrown for city council. And it was Aileen Moore, myself, and Darrell Abin.
Okay.
And if you see the green signs around those, they're pretty major.
Yeah, I've seen those. But I think you're already familiar with me, anyway, I think. Because I'm the one who said that if you wanted this meeting, I had no use of putting up, being able to vote for you because I've got to be able to ask questions. And that's why I'm thankful to see that you did show up.
Well, yes, sir. I'm very thankful. I have a support system at home that allows me the opportunity to come and participate in forums like this and will allow me to participate in all the functions of the city.
Absolutely.
Because if you're going to be representing us, you need to be able to have that ability.
Andrew, would you like to make a comment?
Since you pointed out, I don't want a lot of your eyes, to be quite frank. I find it kind of subtle and really on the verge of, I'm trying to choose my words. I'm having a difficult time. It's almost insulting, to be honest, that given a month's notice by the state to put this together eight days before the election, in a campaign time that you committed to, you know, it's, we're within the realm of the campaign. And we all had a month's notice for our schedules for this, and we're eight days before the election. And what you should take away from this is that you have three candidates who are here willing to answer any question that you might have. And what I have, will tell you, at least to myself, is that moving forward, I will always be willing to answer any question you might have. You have to show up to be event. In everything that I've done, everything I've had to do, I had to present to make an impact. So, that's what we're trying to do.
Very well said by both of you, Julie. Just remember, April 5th, we're going to be here with Brandon Cox, Kevin Condon, and Greg Abin. Next question.
My name is, hello. My name is Luther Steele, and I'd like to follow up three of you guys. The hard-working, the same as I said. And back to what you was, I just want to rephrase it. We have a popular mayor. And he put together this team. Give it to whoever, it's up front. And I thank you for coming and being the only member to show up, and that says a lot to me. But my question is, since we have a popular mayor, a well-working city council, a lot of stuff has been proceeding very, very well over the past few years. How is it, now, I have to ask you a question. How, what is the forum? Can I ask?
You, I would like to ask a question all three of you can answer.
I just want to ask her a few questions.
Oh, make your mic off, please.
My name is Zach White. I'm for Metro. My question is, I have a lot of friends that are entrepreneurs, wanting to start businesses. Some here, some all across the world. And one of the biggest complaints I've heard in this city is actually starting a business and business licenses. And I understand we have a popular mayor because status quo, hey, things are great. You know, let's not upset the apple cart. But at the same token, you know, we've got the tented larger cities in South Carolina. We are growing, and if we don't do something to head off basically the impending apocalypse of where tax prices have to increase greatly, what if we do to address allowing businesses to come into Goose Creek in an easy manner?
Great question. Greg, go first. You're in the role. Now, thank you guys for the way you're ready. So, Greg, I'll let you go first.
Kevin and Brandon have yielded their mental estimate. Don't hold that up until I start, Billy. If any of you have seen anything I've said, either on my Facebook page or my website, heard me talking in the community, this is the topic that I am, that I think is the number one issue facing our city. And let me head something off. The mayor isn't running this time, guys. All right? This is a city council election. There are five people running for three seats. And the mayor's not up for reelection. It is the three of us and some other folks that are running to fill three seats to provide leadership to a city who has raised tax, property taxes in each of the last few years. And I'm not even, I'm not going to argue the merit behind those property tax increases. Because you can't win if you try to argue the merit behind property tax increases. Except they were ready to pay for things that we need. 41,000 people in the city of Goose Creek, we are the ninth largest, depending on who you ask. Mr. Cox said 10. We think we got a funny conversation about that. We're too big to operate the way we are going about it currently. We're not a small town. And the idea that we are, that ship has sailed a long time ago. I had a conversation with somebody the other day saying he'd much rather pay higher taxes. Oh, you're killing me. Much, he'd rather pay higher taxes than live on a street like Ashley Posberg with. Compared, talking about traffic, I said. And I asked him, I said, "If you tried driving down 176 at seven o'clock in the morning on the way to work, like, traffic's already here. There's 41,000 people in the city of Goose Creek. There's thousands of new homes planned. You have thousands of new people that munch on it and someone else that comes through Goose Creek. Traffic is what it is."
She's going to blow that whistle. Let's pass it on to Kevin. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for that question. Very good. I have a feeling you're going to hear three very similar answers up here on that. We need to find a way to ease the licensing process. And what we keep hearing from small businesses is very hard to understand and go through it. So, we need to find a way to make it easier. I've asked the questions. I've heard we're pretty comparable in relation to price of our licenses to Summerville and North Charleston based on population size. I do believe there may be some room to bring that down if we could find a way to give some money back somewhere and reward the businesses first, get them handled. And once they start to thrive and move into the area, that will then increase the general fund and will allow us to then give that to the taxpayer. So, that way, everybody gets a win. And we definitely have areas within the city of Goose Creek that need to be redeveloped. A lot of times, you give the term blighted. I think that's just a nasty term. We don't have blighted areas here in Goose Creek as far as, we have tired areas. They're gray areas. They're just old and have been used up and need to be redeveloped. So, I would really love to see us push to bring businesses in to redevelop those tired areas. It raises our tax level. It calls for less services because generally, all they use is fire and police protection. The general has their own trash pickup, so we don't have to use that for them. So, it's a much more economical and feasible thing for our city to use our tax base based on businesses as opposed to residential. Like Greg said, the property taxes have been raised the last two years. I do believe it was just one rate, but it was implemented in two parts. Not that that helps any, but everybody knew it was coming. So, definitely, we need to find a way to make the processes. I don't want to answer your question.
Thank you so much. And Brandon, it provoked my attention that you need to speed up a little bit or approach him to the white part.
Okay, all right. Ready to start. I'm a business owner. I started my business 11 years ago. It's my third day. My company used to be in Goose Creek. It was a one-handed circle. Business license, I don't mind paying for roads, five apartment. I said, it's five apartment, law enforcement, first responders. The great city has needed, as a business owner, I know that you have to generate revenue. You don't want to pay lightly. That's the same as the city, because any organization has to generate revenue. That comes with the form of business licenses and taxes and things like that. The way that the business license is currently structured forced me to make a decision to move out of the city. I was getting taxed on money generated in Afghanistan or money generated in England or in Europe or somewhere else. I was getting taxed on gross revenues. I can't control that because my gross revenues are my gross revenue. It's like before you take home and pay your taxes. So, I moved out into the unincorporated borough of Kiel. Now, if we take a new approach with business licenses, it would bring in higher-quality businesses. They're going to pay more to the city. If we can reduce the overall business license burden on the business and give them incentives, they'll move here. So, we're actually going to generate more revenue as a city if we reduce our overall add-on to the business because it's going to bring in higher. add-on to the business, because it's going to bring in higher businesses. Is there any question?
Yes, thank you, all three.
Thank you, man. Next question.
Hi, I'm Sam, and I've lived here for forty-four years. And my question is, I never want to bring in more, or want to bring in more businesses, which will result in building, which, you mean more things in title and places and well houses? Um, but what do you guys plan to do about green space in our community when we start bringing in these businesses? What's your plans for green space?
Well, right now, in the confidence of plan, it outlines what green spaces are, um, we definitely need to maintain what we already have, and we need to add to it, because everybody here enjoys green spaces, it brings up property value, it provides the passive recreation, people walking and hiking and bats through it. But we need to add to it, only when it makes sense. Um, I've heard that when, sit down, the new fire station opens up heckboards, that they were talking about wanting to make old heckboards on Butler Hall Green Space. To me, that doesn't make any sense, it's prime commercial real estate. And if we sell that to a new business coming in, then that adds to our general fund, and it allows us the opportunity to buy green space that makes sense, that will add in to the hyperbolic trails. And any, um, heard watching all the other stuff that we can do here with the, uh, green spaces in Goose Creek. Does that answer your question?
Right. Somebody's got a pretty cool brain, Kevin. Um, green space and businesses have to have a balance. One of the things that people forget about green space is that it takes maintenance. You're still, it's because you turn in the green space, you just have to make it, you got to make sure that their, the grass is cut back, there's nothing, it's not a dumping ground, so, um, to echo what Kevin was saying, if we can bring in a higher business and sell a piece of property to a business, that will come here, well, now they're generating revenue, and to echo what you're saying again, uh, now we can go buy the appropriate green space. But just because it's called green space, somebody needs free, free land to us, so it requires maintenance.
Nothing's free, right? Um, I think, I think that there's value in green space, and it's, you know, I'm, I'm the guy that, you know, wants economic development, that's all anybody hears. You have to have a plan for everything to do. When I talk about managing growth, one of the things that I talk very, very specifically about, um, is redevelopment of, and I use the term blighted, I know Kevin doesn't like it, but I use the term blighted, but redevelopment of blighted areas. When you talk about green space, you're not only talking about keeping trees, keeping grass, keeping all the other, but what you're, what you're talking about is making your town something that you like to drive through, something, buildings that you like to see, an area that you like to, to be a part of. The city, keep in mind, does not have in and of itself tools available to it, to use as we speak, for incentives to incentivize the redevelopment of blighted properties. However, there are tools available through the county and state that we call and say, hey, we need some help, uh, can you come help us incentivize this? And we can, we can, we can work through processes like we probably haven't before. Specific examples, down by the Epps Country Club, I know what, I'm a person people's feeling here, just, but, that they're talking about building a, uh, building a restaurant in a group of trees that backs up to the country club, it, it backs up to, to a easement that backs up to the country club. Now, I'm all for economic development, I really am, but it takes a proactive approach to economic development, that where we might be able to encourage folks, incentivize, incentivize folks to redevelop the two buildings that are right next to the area, that are empty and blighted. Instead, we're going to tear down two acres of trees right back up to the Epps County Club. Now, they're going to meet all the requirements, if good people try to do good business, but again, we have to think differently than we have in the past, and I'm sorry.
Yes, good practice. Next question.
I'm Gary Barini, I live at 126 Estes Drive. My biggest concern in the near future for the city of Goose Creek is that we are losing our city administrator. He's been destroying the city day to day in operations, and what I'd like to know is how do you intend to work with the new city administrator?
Mr. Barini, that's a great question. Uh, there is no denying that thirty-eight years of corporate knowledge comes with a price. It's going to be incumbent upon city council, and I know those elected, regardless of the election, we're going to have a brand new council, to go find somebody that fills very, very large shoes. I also view as an opportunity, um, for council to find the best candidate, and not arbitrarily find a replacement that may or may not be the most qualified, or maybe not as qualified. But as we transition to the, the next phase of Goose Creek, half the new city council, new administrator, probably a new chief of police, all of the experience from the city has changed regardless of the outcome of this election. And we need to make sure that, as elected officials, we do the right thing for the city, and not just for ourselves.
Otherwise, you'll really get me confused.
I, I would confuse. Well, the, if I'm elected, the new city administrator, and I are going to blame Dennis for the next year for any problem that happens, that's how we work, we're, we're, um, it's, as Brandon pointed out, not only is, is Mr. Harmon retiring, but virtually the, the entire senior staff in the next several years will be retired. Um, and this is where, when you talk about leadership, that, that, that's very important. The city administration, Mr. Harmon, the rest of the group, they take their direction from city council and mayor. Um, and if, you have to comprise the city council and, and, and mayor, folks who have the capacity and the ability to provide high-level leadership to the high level of administrative that we have. All right, so when you say how you're going to work with them, I have things that I believe, there, there are things that I believe, and that's people, I, I try to share those with folks. And, and what I believe is what I'm going to try to lead this city in, and we're going to try to, I'm talking in circles, but you have to be able to convey those things with the city administrator. But they take their lead, the administration takes their lead from city council. So you're going to have independent thought and be, and provide leadership to an administration to carry out what it is you want them to, to do. Now, we have, we're a great city, we have a lot to offer, a lot to offer. Um, you know, an appropriate search for a new city administrator might be a nationwide search, it might be a search for South Carolina, it might be that, that, uh, you know, somebody knows somebody who knows somebody, and that person might be the best candidate. I don't, I don't know the answer to that. But I, I will not allow the city to sell itself short when we go to select a new city administrator. Um, there's too much to offer here, and we're too big, uh, a city at this point, to operate any other government.
Hey, you made it before the red flag came up, congratulations, man.
Um, the way I look at, to quote someone earlier, we've got to quit doing what we're doing, and think outside the box and do something new. And, uh, Mr. Harmon has done a wonderful job for the city in his time here, and when we get a new city administrator, and we'll have half a brand new city council, that may be the opportunity that we need as a city to start moving in a different direction, to do things we haven't done, or to try things we haven't tried. So in answering your question, we work very closely with the new city administrator, to try to figure out how to bring businesses in here, the high-end businesses, the restaurants everybody keeps on talking about. You know, my opinion on that is, once hospital comes in, and all the offices around the hospital come with, the dialysis clinics, the dentist office, the doctor shops, chiropractic shops, then we'll add the lunch crowd and the dinner crowd, and you'll start seeing that in the town being where you're from all the way in. And then that gives a great opportunity to get out this into town, to make a special place for boutique style businesses, maybe. Um, so we can start thinking outside the box with a new administrator, and maybe moving in a different direction.
Excellent. Next question.
My name's Alan, I go to several city council meetings. I think the majority of the people that attend the meetings are well-pleased with the police and fire department. And several times, it's been mentioned that city council should look about raising the pay a little bit higher than it is now, and what your feelings are on this.
I'm sorry, it was Alan?
Alan.
Alan? Thank you. Um, Alan, thank you. Uh, the, the, the starting pay, I'm, I'm a little more familiar with, for the city of Goose Creek, is actually higher, a little higher than Berkeley County. Uh, so pay is not necessarily the do-all, end-all, when it comes to, um, keeping and supporting law enforcement officers and fire, firemen in the city of Goose Creek. Certainly, we all like to make money, and I don't want to sound like that's not an issue, but pay is sort of a wood issue when it comes to employee satisfaction. You know, are they supported by their superiors, or do they feel supported by city council? And health insurance, if you go and ask most of the folks around, the biggest issue that we face in keeping, uh, law enforcement and firemen, uh, over the course, over a period of time, you, you go ask them why they believe, most of the answer is going to be health insurance for your family. Um, we're, we're kind of in line with cities of our size. Now, I like using saying that, we're in line with cities of our size, I tell people, I want us to be the benchmark, I don't care what anybody else is doing. I want city of Goose Creek to be the benchmark in how we treat our employees, and our fire, our, our policemen. Um, but I think the biggest issue, outside of some other general areas that, um, they would tell you, is probably health insurance. The problem with that is, you've got to pay for that. All right? Every question you guys ask, I promise, I could turn that answer back into economic development. I mean, it's just that, I could turn every question you ask back into economic development. You have to be able to pay whatever you want to do. Would I be in favor of raising their pay commensurately, right, providing, uh, health insurance to their families, and making the city's name, I'll do it, Mr. Baker? Yes, but you have to pay for that.
Um, to echo what Greg said, yes, is everything has costs to it. And if we don't find a way to bring businesses in and raise our tax base that way, then I'd raise property taxes in order to do it. And I would much rather have businesses paid at that expense, since they're the ones who use the police, probably, uh, police protection along with the fire protection and citizens. We don't want to raise property taxes if we don't. As we said earlier, they've gotten raised the last two years, demand the fire stations with the twelve new firefighters, and we all understand that. Doesn't mean all of us are happy about it, but we all understand it. So we definitely need to, as Greg said, come back to economic development and bring the businesses in, so that we can raise the tax base in the next hour.
So one of the greatest things about having a new opportunity, with the new, half new city council and administrators, taking a fresh look at how we currently conduct business, specifically to our first responders and law enforcement. Imagine if we could build a retirement program that blows away every other city in the state of South Carolina, and we incentivize, uh, a young, law enforcement fire department professional to stay with us for twenty years, and we find a creative way to pay for their healthcare. They will, our recruiting will go through the roof, we will select the highest standing law enforcement, the first responders out there. But it's going to take any way of thinking, we can't pay for it without, you know, developing. But if we can take a look at what it costs the city to send this away to South Florida Law Enforcement Academy, and have them graduate, and come back to us for two years just to leave us to go to North Charleston, what if we could treat it with a different perspective, and incentivize them to stay with us for twenty years, maybe twenty-five years, maybe even thirty years? Imagine how much we will save, spin it up, new law enforcement officers, getting uniforms, we can actually save money by keeping our law enforcement officers and fire department loaded. Any questions?
Great, so now we're coming back to you again. All right, next question.
Uh, hi, my name is Lisa Burdick, and I just want to say it's really nice to meet all of you, because, um, I've engaged with all of you on social media, the, uh, Goose Creek forum on Facebook, so it's nice to put, uh, a face with the, with the names. But given that you all say that it keeps coming back to economic development, um, that's, that's my big hot button issue since I came here. And, um, I did attend, uh, the candidates' forums for the last mayor election, and, uh, this came up repeatedly at that one as well. And while I realize Mayor Heisler, you know, has obviously done a really good job, he's been reelected for thirty-some odd years, um, my impression in general is that status quo is okay the way it is, and, you know, if business wants to be here, it will come. Um, my impression of you folks is that you believe, as I do, that you need to take a more proactive approach. And my question is specifically, given the mindset at City Hall right now, is what my impression of what the mindset is and the perspective over there, uh, how are you specifically proposing to work with whoever remains on city council and in the mayor's office and the economic development, uh, group to actually put some initiatives together? What, what is the actual plan to, uh, move things forward?
Uh, very good question. Uh, as a city, as we, we can offer incentives. So like Greg said earlier, we would have to work very closely with, uh, Berkeley County's economic development department, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, economic development department with the state, um, and also, we would have to, as you said, find a way to work with the other three council members. It takes two meetings and four votes for each reading to pass anything. So that's why this election is so important, because you're going to get three brand new council members. And if you get three council members that are light-minded in their economic development file process, then all we need is one more to come along with us, to be able to get things through city council. And once you start that process rolling, I believe, it will be easier as it goes on, because people will get used to it, and then more businesses will want to come. So then the process gets better, the tax base goes up, and, and it's a vicious cycle, as you keep saying, you keep going back to the same thing. But like I said, it does take four votes and two meetings to get anything passed, so you'll have three if you get three light-minded economic people, and then we just need one more from the other side. Does that answer your question?
Well, this is a political office as well, so you have to be political to get things done. Um, one of the things I've learned over the last number of years, being a CEO of a company that works with multiple agencies and multiple companies, is that some like us, some don't like us. And exactly, every day, I have to be a facilitator, I have to bring everybody together, I have to get us on the same sheet, and we have to move forward in the company's position. And that's another reason why I love you, I think, uh, I think I could facilitate the, uh, move forward for the city, and not just the city, but the county as well. And so that, as was said, it's obviously a hot button for all of us. And if the three of us were elected, I think we're very light-minded when it comes to economic development, and it's going to be easier to facilitate that move forward.
I have to make calls on, on, uh, in, in my business, I do a lot of customer sales calls, and, you know, maybe once a year, once, twice a year, I go back to the same people, and sometimes I, I, I don't ever expect that I'm going to get their business, but occasionally I do. I don't mind being told that. Uh, historically, there are a couple of reasons why people will tell you that economic development in the city of Goose Creek is, is a difficult hurdle to get over. One is, people will tell you, well, they just don't want to come. Um, and the other, people will tell you, well, you've got North Charleston here, and you've got someone there, and you've got all these other things. I'm, I'm, it's okay to me if you go and you talk to people about what Goose Creek is, and they still don't want to come, but you at least have to go out and talk to people about what Goose Creek is. A friend of mine is up in Merle Beach, and I talked to him the other day, and he said, everywhere he goes, somebody asks him where he's from, and he says, well, I'm from Goose Creek, South Carolina, I'm from Goose Creek. This is in Merle Beach. And these are people not from Ontario that are asking, these are people in, in, that are from Merle Beach. Where are you from? Goose Creek. Where's that? That's a problem. Forty-one thousand people live in the city of Goose Creek, ninth or tenth, depending on who you ask. Largest city in the state with a very high median income. I find it hard to believe that if we had, uh, a fairly proactive approach to economic development, we couldn't convince somebody to come in here, we could buy their pants. I mean, I, you know, again, I'm not so sure that we need a whole lot of, uh, bells and whistles and tools and that kind of thing to get to where we are, or where I want to be, or where I hope we all want to be. We need, we need a management change, and a, and a leadership that wants to take us there.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. All right, we're going to have time for about two more questions. Did we get everybody to them? Yeah, I think everybody got this, and I'll start with you, Greg, correct. All right, we'll get this figured out by the time we're done. All right, so here we go. We have about time, about two more questions before they have closing statements to go.
Yeah. What have we, what has the city of Goose Creek gotten right up to this point, in your opinion, and what have we gotten terribly wrong? And what's wrong? What would you do about it?
That is a great question. I think the cities... I think this city is amazing. One of the reasons I had her staying is because this is such a great city. That's why, uh, we need a fresh city council, which is going to happen regardless, to keep it that way, and to take it to the next step. We have a lot of green space, a lot of high-tech control. One of the things I like doing in the morning is walking with Hannah, we have phenomenal facilities here. Recreation is great, sanitation is great. The city has done a lot of great things. At the end of the day, come April sixth, there will be half of the council, and come in late summer, a brand new administrator, or at least a search for one. Not so much what we've done wrong, but what can we do better? There's always room for improvement, and there's always a way forward, and we have to latch on to the fact that everything around us is growing. If we don't understand it, it's already left in the dust. And so that's what we need to do better, is prepare for the future. Very good question.
Have you got anything else?
Uh, I'm sure we've got something.
That stands out to you?
Uh, the, the one thing that I would, I would, uh, look at deeper is the business license process. Um, I know we need to pay for it, we've got to keep the lights on, understand that, but I think we can actually generate more revenue for the city by taking another look at how we, how our business licenses are being charged. So, thank you.
When you're communicating, let me restate, back, back in my life as an, my former life as an educator, a counselor, I knew that, uh, I, you're not actually listening to somebody unless they know you are listening to them. Commercially, you're not communicating to someone unless you know that they're getting the information. So one of the things I don't like about how we operate as a city and you ask what we're doing alone is we're not very proactive when it comes to communicating with people. The people is what I should say. You know, when the answer to, when somebody comes up and says, hey, what do you mean, you want to build this behind my house, or you want to do this and that, the answer, you know, how was I supposed to know that? When the answer to that is, well, it was on the website. Or if the answer to that is, well, we had the I R B meeting three weeks ago, why were today? I think one of the things that we have to get better as administrators as community is communicating effectively with people. You can't anticipate that somebody's not going to be real happy about a strip club going behind their house, and that you might have some issues there. To communicate effectively with somebody that that might be happening, you have to be able to identify those things ahead of time, communicate effectively, you might head off some things, head, 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 head some things off. Um, it's not about where we've been, we, we all are a regular city, we're blessed with residency in South Carolina, and I've raised two kids here, they're off, they're well-educated, and I'm happy that they're out of my house. Um, yeah, he, he knows. Um, but it's really, it's not about where we've been for thirty-eight years, it's about where we are right now and where we're going. Forty-one thousand people, ninth or tenth, largest city in the state of South Carolina, we are too big not to operate at an extremely high level. And what I mean by that is a commitment to economic development, a commitment to communication, a commitment to our law enforcement, firefighters, our public service.
Uh, thank you very much, it's a very good question. To say what we did right, obviously it's a lot because we haven't grown to forty-one thousand strong here in Goose Creek from just a little crossroads, oh, downtown, way back in nineteen fifty-five, nineteen sixty-one, when they incorporated. So we've done a lot right. Um, we've got a good police department, great fire department, excellent public works, I don't think anybody complains about getting their trash yard repicked up. Um, to echo Greg, yes, communication is where we could do better things. Um, how many people in here know that the city of Goose Creek comes from? Less than half, not very well communicated. We have a great unit that sits right next to a great set of tennis courts the city owns, and anybody can use them for a fee, a very small fee, and it sits right there at the country club next to the golf course we own. So see, a lot of people don't know the things that we have and we provide near Goose Creek because it's not very well communicated to you. And as we've said before, looks on the website, well, that's great, but we need to find a better way to reach out, and that way we make these amenities a lot more cost effective. Two years ago, we resurfaced the tennis courts at the country club, like sixty-two hundred dollars, but we only have a very limited amount of membership for those tennis courts because the people in Goose Creek don't know that they can come and join. They still think it's part of a local plantation, and they still think it's a private country club because we haven't been very effective in communicating that word. So it's those kinds of things that we need to get better at as a city. Other than that, everything else we do very well, and hopefully we'll continue to do well and continue on to the future. Another answered question.
Thank you, man, that was all for me, correct? I said, now we're down to our last question for the evening. Lady Hutchinson.
Good evening, I'm Rose Hutchinson, and I live in the town, and I am very happy tonight to hear so much use of the word green space because I think green space goes hand in hand with environment and sustainability. And we know that, um, our recycling program is a county function, and, but my question is, one, I would like to ask each of you, does your household recycle? And also, I want to know, is there anything that you think the city could do to promote recycling above and beyond maybe what the counties or even in partnership with the county? And when you're attracting all of this new, um, industry and everything, think green, you know, think about promoting and, and trying to bring in green industry. Just, I'm wondering, what do you call some of that, the environmental issues? Thank you.
Thank you, very good question. Sadly, no, we don't recycle, and, um, it is actually the company I work with that has the county contract with, uh, Berkeley County to do the recycling as public services. And I'm sure, as with the raise of hands, with the rule of law, you can get over the laws, Goose Creek has a recycling program through the county because it's not very well publicized. And that's something I hear at work all the time, that, you know, we could do better. We send one truck over here, I believe, one day a week, and it gets everything. So if that's all it takes, is one truck, one day a week, then we've done a very poor job letting people in Goose Creek know that we have a recycling program through the county. And I don't believe it's very expensive, so, and, and they'll get you, I believe, within. So we need to do a better job again, communicating with residents of Goose Creek about the recycling. And if, at the point we get large enough with the businesses, I think that's something we can look into doing ourselves. Um, I know that there's some things going on within the county that's going to really ramp up recycling. Um, probably something they'll let you know here shortly. So, um, recycling is really a hot button, and it's really getting larger, especially as people from up north are moving down south, because I know up north they do a lot of recycling, and it's really starting to, to triple down here, so I would like to see more of it as well. Another answered question.
My wife is adamant about recycling, reduce, reuse recycling.
Yeah.
Alright, yeah. So, yes, ma'am, with your recycling. Now, I can recycle my house, and we also have a, a green initiative by company. All of the things that we have to build, we've had to make sure that the standard operating procedures are, of course, sort of helping, taking care of our, not just our clients, but our employees as well. It's important enough to put them in, uh, an environment where they're, you know, being exposed to public use. So, yes, ma'am, absolutely. Very good.
My paycheck comes from recycling. Um, just, just saying. Uh, so I do know a little bit about the subject, um, so, but relative to service by, by municipality, um, it has to make, it has to make cost sense to a city to provide that service as a part of service. Like, right now, it really doesn't for the city to provide that service, um, because it's not, it's, it's a cost rather than a profit center for the city. Uh, you're right, what's offered is, I think, thirty-two dollars a year, um, that you can, you, you pay and you can participate, and Republic provides that through, through the county. Um, my mother participates in recycling, reuse, reuse recycling, uh, through that program. Um, but in order to take it further for, as a municipality, there, there's a lot of things that, that, that stand in the way of that. Most notably is that it's a commodities business, and you have, you can't control your cost or your, or your income based on recycling program, so you don't know how much money as a municipality you're going to have to put into a recycling program on an annual basis. So it's very difficult to do that. Um, the city of Goose Creek does not run, uh, a surplus every year. We have a balanced budget for local, I could be corrected if I'm wrong, basically a balanced budget. So if you have unforeseen things, but there's a reserve fund, but that's different than a surplus. So without having real concrete numbers, it's really hard to, to do, and it's, it's going to be a big cost to any municipality who wants to participate in a recycling program. I've heard somebody say, uh, a, a man much smarter than me, that said, um, he could provide as much government as any people would like to pay. And so if you would like a, a recycling program offered by the municipality, you just need a bunch of people to go and pay. Uh, so, thank you.
Alright, man, thank you all so much. Hang on to the microphone there, Greg, because I know how much you like to continue talking past your time. I'm going to let you go first.
How much time do I have?
I've got two minutes for your closing statement. I'm going to let you go first, and then I guarantee the next to bring you the last one down. What was your statement?
Two minutes. I'm going to need us to pace and lose the sign. Um, I appreciate you all coming out, and, uh, there's so many points that I think I wanted to make that I didn't get a chance to. Uh, and I thought I had my thoughts, you know, sort of all lined up and was ready to square them all, but then you get up here, you start talking, and new things pop in your head, and you just kind of get a little lost sometimes, I think, or at least I did. Um, I'm committed to a city that, uh, that I raised my kids in, that my parents retired in. Um, we have a great town, but we've got to get from where we are, which is forty-one thousand people, rising property taxes, uh, more demand on public service, more demand on recreational services, because we're a grown city. Uh, we've got to get from here to somewhere where, that, where we are the benchmark when it comes to a marriage between economic development and quality of life, a marriage between economic development and recreational opportunities. Um, my son raised BMX box for a long time, took us all over the world, and I can tell you, some of the most beautiful facilities around that we've been to were city and county facilities, um, where these communities got it right at a really high level. Um, there's an example up in Rock Hill where they just invested eleven million dollars, uh, into a cycling center, but the city invested eleven million dollars into a cycling center. They went out and sought the sponsorship from Novak Health, who invested eight million dollars of their own money into sponsoring these kind of things. We have to think the way, in a way that maybe we haven't thought before, but from where we are or where we want to go, which is our same tax rate, right? Great econo, great recreational opportunities, really cool restaurant to go down and have a really good meal, in addition to the ones we already have, I'm not stopping Mr. Bates. Alright, from where we are now to where we're going to be, it's going to take leadership, um, for us to get there. I appreciate it, man, you guys coming.
Thank you, Greg. Okay?
Uh, also, sorry, I also want to thank y'all for coming out tonight. Um, we've all been campaigning for about a month now. That's, uh, answering questions and engaging with people on forums, on Facebook, to knocking on doors and planting signs. Uh, we've got a week left for our job of campaigning before it's all wrapped up. Your, your job as voters is what's really starting to begin now, and I really applaud all of you for coming out here tonight to get that process started, to try and learn as much information about all the candidates if you possibly can, so you can make a educated decision come April fifth as to who you want to represent you on city council. As has been pointed out, this is a very historic election, after city council's going to be branded. So we're going to be, have, we're going to have to be broken in, we're going to have to be educated on how things work, so it's going to be a learning process for all of us. Your job is to make sure you vote in the best choice for us, and it's going to take a team effort to move Goose Creek from here where we are to where we want to be. It's going to take the residents, it's going to take city council, and it's going to take the businesses, and we're going to have to come together in a team effort with a common goal and a common good, and that common goal and the common good is the city of Goose Creek. And although we may be the ones, if elected, sitting up in front of y'all at city council, we are stewards for you. So we ask that all of you continue to be educated and find the best council candidate if you can, and make sure you get out and vote on April fifth, and make sure you, you tell everybody you know how important this election is and the thing you can get out and vote on April fifth, because the city of Goose Creek and the direction we go in very well give the estate this Tuesday, or a week tomorrow. So, thank you very much, and God bless.
Alright, so I got to go last. I'll try not to get to the record. Um, again, thank, thank you all for coming out tonight. I know it's not convenient always to, to me, you know, to come out with three potential politicians, so thank you for bearing with us, thank you for the great questions. Um, I hope that tonight, when you go back, it takes more time to do some more research on this. At the end of the day, Goose Creek is going to be in great hands. That's the good thing, we won't have anybody too crazy about it, which is nice. So, please, I'll, I'll go where I want. Um, so, this is an historic election, treat it as such, please. We have a real opportunity to move this great city forward, being the ninth and tenth largest in the state, that's a big deal, and I think you get your time, but, but, but.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you'd enjoy me giving a round of applause, these three men. (applause) It's a lot to, uh, sit out there, announce your candidacy, get into the political race, get into the form, get into the fray, and, and put your name and your, your reputation and your life on the published route. I know it does take a lot, takes a lot of your families as well, and I appreciate these men, I know you do as well, for standing out there, giving, cutting the edge of this. Pastor suggested that I allow anyone that's here that is currently running for an office other than Goose Creek city council, if you would like to introduce yourself, maybe just state the name of the office that you were running for, that way if anyone would like to speak to you before we leave, uh, that would be appropriate. So, uh, I'm Ray Nash, I'm running for sheriff in Dorchester County. (laughter) I've got that out of the way. Is there any other candidate here that can introduce themselves over?
Uh, I'm Joe Danny, I represent part of the city of Goose Creek as the state representative in the state house of South Carolina. And I just want to thank these three guys for showing up and doing such a great job and answering all the questions that I thought were very precise, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
My name is Stephen Smith, I'm running for state house district fifteen, that covers a large piece of, uh, Goose Creek, North Charleston, and Hanahan. Uh, the basis of my philosophy is liberty, and a value of individuality, constitutional government, and the rule of law. I'm the candidate you want to take a look at. I think we've got three great candidates up here, and, and like this, it's a historic election, I think that Goose Creek will be in good hands. I live in Goose Creek, I'm proud of living in Goose Creek, and I think we've got some, some really good choices here. Thank you.
(applause) Who's the others? We also need to recognize those that contribute to breaking about this form, putting it all together, organizing it. I know Bill and Marvin Bates, racing men on this, can we give them a round of applause? And the biggest round of applause needs to go to Suel and our townkeepers. Let's give a round of applause to Suel. And ladies and gentlemen, we're dismissed. We're dismissed for the evening, thank you so much for your attendance. Yeah, please, I'm sure the candidates can hang around here, please.
(laughter) (inaudible) 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 (laughter) (inaudible)